Hi. I just wanted to thank you all for attending the League Town Hall meeting. I'm Chip Shearer, the Chair of League, and I just wanted to point out some of our executive officers on the Executive Committee. Jeff Plechow, who's sitting way over in the corner. Jeff is our Vice Chair. Clive Neal, who's very, very happy to be our former Chair. Mike Worgo is our Executive Secretary. Greg Schmidt is our NLSI representative. And, I got him. And Steve Mcwell is our representative from the LPI, who is also our Community Outreach Coordinator for League. We're going to be doing something a little bit different that we haven't done at these League Town Hall meetings before. And this just kind of outlines the schedule. For approximately 10, five to 10 minutes, I'm going to discuss and give you updates on past and future League activities. Between 10, 1:10, and 1:50, we're going to have a panel discussion. And hopefully, everybody in the audience will interact with the panel, which essentially discusses and gets your input with regards to potential synergies among human destinations. The panelists are going to be Mark Sykes, who's a representative from the Small Bodies Analysis Group. David Dean-Murray, who isn't here yet, hopefully will be here and represent the MEPAG point of view. And again, I will be with the panelists representing League. And then finally, at 2 o'clock, starting at 2, from 2 to 5, Rob Kelso will be leading a series of presentations and discussions concerning the lunar heritage sites. Just as one of my first announcements is that the annual League meeting will take place November 7th through 9th at the Lunar Planetary Science Institute. There'll be one-page abstracts due on September 12th. The website for the meeting is noted here. And if you have any questions, feel free to email Clive Neal.
Yeah.
But seriously, that was my email address up there. Just in terms of the summary of past League activities over the last six to nine months, we did have our Wet vs. Dry Moon Meeting Workshop. This was cosponsored, and League is working, constantly working, hand-in-hand with the NLSI. But this was cosponsored by League, NLSI, CAPTIM, the LPI, and the Stekeler Program. We did have approximately 150 participants at the workshop, which focused on a wide range of themes tied to exploring volatile reservoirs on the moon. This just illustrates some of those themes. Lunar polar volatiles, which we heard several talks here over the last couple of days. Volatiles on the lunar surface. Indigenous volatile reservoirs. And the role of volatiles and fundamental lunar processes. And what I've located, what I've noted here are many of the organizers for each of these individual sessions. I really would like to thank these people considerably. Other activities with, again, the NLSI, we again sponsored the Google XPRIZE Science Workshop that was held last week. And we had numerous lunar exploration roadmap activities. One, to evaluate the roadmap against current planetary science division, the CATAL surveys, the vision and voyage for planetary science in the next decade. And the resulting short white paper that came out of that was forwarded to Jim Green. Then the other aspect of this roadmap is, we essentially devised an enabling robotic precursor campaign that would implement the roadmap in a substantial way. And this was, again, submitted last week to the AEs of the different mission directorates and their deputies. The results of these can be found at the League website, again, located here. And those will be going on the website the middle to the end of next week. And then finally, there were a number of League analyses, which again can be found on the League website. One involving lunar sample acquisition and curation, where we reviewed potentially the nature of exploring and sampling the moon. And then finally, another white paper that came out of a League analysis was the status of lunar regolith simulants and the demand for Apollo samples, and how those can work hand-in-hand in order to provide materials for both science and engineering. I want to go ahead and stop there, and we'll go ahead and move forward with this panel, which it looks like it's going to be just Mark and I. Oh, you're here, David. Thank you. Hey. Great. Thanks for coming, David. And so why don't the panelists come up and sit up front? You each have your own microphone. And the moderator for this panel discussion will be Mike Worgo. And again, the panel discussion has to end by 10 of, the five of, Mike. So it's very, very short. But again, it's the intent for, again, the three Chairs of League, S-BAG, and MEPAG to discuss and have some initial dialogue, and for you to have some input. And with that, Mike, take it away.
Well, I want to thank everyone for being able to commit this additional time to be with us this afternoon. Because this is going to head us in discussions for a potential direction that I think can have substantial value for human exploration. And you know me, if there's value there for human exploration, there's going to be great value there for science. You know, this kind of topic, if we go back, say, four or five years, one of the easiest ways to get the discussion underway and to proceed effectively would be to hand each of our colleagues here a chainsaw, turn out the lights, and we'll all run out of the room. We, as a result, as a result of the work that each of these communities has done in these kinds of time periods. First of all, from exploration systems perspective, each one of them has devoted some pretty significant commitment and resources within their community to understand the needs of exploration and to assess how those needs can be fulfilled. We have the MEPAG Goal Four in the Goals Document. In the Initial Charter for League, it particularly called out the support and cooperation among three different mission directorates, and the overall areas of science, exploration, commerce, and resources. And when the Charter for the Small Bodies Assessment Group was developed, they saw that as an opportunity to provide value, not just to science, but to exploration and to planetary defense. So with those kinds of foundations established, and with the direction that NASA has announced of following a flexible path forward for human exploration, which includes the moon, small bodies, the moons of Mars and Mars, it seemed a natural to start to ask each of these groups where the synergies lie for the development of approaches to meeting those needs for human exploration beyond low Earth orbit. And the League took an approach last year to say, as we explore the moon, what are the things that can be done there that would be enabling for exploration, for example, of small bodies? So we'd like to continue to take those steps and to have the interaction among these communities, where we always recognize that the net result, that sum, is going to be more than just the separate parts. So based on that, we have a fairly broad topic of looking at the synergies among these research communities and their capabilities. And what I'd like to do is open it up to each one for, you know, an opening set of thoughts, and then let's have a discussion after that. And now, I'll get out of the way.
Great, thanks, Mike. Why don't I go ahead and start off? And first, again, what I would like to do is, again, welcome Mark and David here, representing their communities. And again, I just want to remind you, this is a kickoff, and we're asking the question, are there synergies? And what are those synergies among the different planetary bodies as we, within the context of human exploration? And what I see is, you know, this is the kickoff. You know, my plan is to go to the S-BAG meeting at the end of August to conduct a similar dialogue and discussion with Mark. And again, you know, perhaps some of this discussion could continue with MEPAG. Potentially, you know, what could come out of this is, again, a combined discussion group or committee which evaluates and looks at some of these synergies. And those, that analysis group is essentially made up of members of our individual communities. Let's see, what else did I want to say? This has, this actually has been done before. And it's been done through MEPAG. I think five or six years ago, I led an analysis group through MEPAG that kind of looked at, if one goes to the moon, what can we learn from the moon that can then be, that can essentially feed forward to Mars? And I think it was fairly successful, and that is on the MEPAG website. However, I think, well, no, this is different from that approach. This approach is not, can we go to Mars to go to the moon, or go to the moon to go to the small bodies? What it is to identify, what synergies do we have? And where can some investments go that can essentially enhance human exploration on all three bodies? So it's not me first, or any of these groups first, but again, identifying synergies. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and just give you several examples that I thought of this morning, that could be potential synergies that we could explore. One which I think is really very transformational is that of identifying resources on the planetary surface and being able to utilize those resources. So essentially, exploration, and then institute resource utilization, if you will. Again, all three bodies may have different resources, but the approach that one could use to explore these resources and process these resources at the subsystem level could be very, very similar. Another potential synergy that I see is utilizing and producing simulants, materials that could be used as analogues for engineering studies of lunar regolith, regolith from small bodies, or regolith from the Mars. Already, most of you know, there is a lunar simulant project currently being funded by NASA program. And it would be rather nice to move forward from producing, again, simulants with particular properties for the moon for engineering, and expand that to include other planetary bodies. And I know from the League report and analysis of this, we did discuss this already. And finally, something that's a bit closer to my heart is samples and sample returns. You know, we discussed at the League meeting, or the NLSI meeting, exploring volatiles and volatile traps, and the nature of volatiles. I know there are some potential issues tied to returning samples from Mars that are partially tied to, how can one preserve samples once you take them out of the Martian environment? And there may be similar issues tied to the collection, sampling of materials on small bodies. And so therefore, you know, another synergy could be potentially tied to, how does one collect and contain these materials? Why don't I go ahead and pass the mic off to Mark?
Okay. So I apologize in advance for having me on the road since 2:00 this morning. But I think that synergies really require a context, a policy context. Because if it's synergies for doing science, you know, then a lot of things that you mentioned are certainly there, simulants, things like that. But when we're talking about human exploration, you know, the question is always begged, for what purpose? And for decades, the purpose seems to have been to keep on doing what we're doing. And we're probably in a certain amount of chaos today with various battles within the Congress as to defining what the future of our human explorations program is going to be, because we really haven't had a long-term purpose. I have, you know, if we're going to put people out into beyond Earth, it should be something for more than tourism. And I think that the question that's, that nobody likes to raise, but Jeff Grayson, I did think gave a very nice speech a few weeks ago, talking about how the battles are, how do we keep on spending money to do what we're doing, and then something's going to happen. And then we're going to end up like settlements and things like that on the future. But we're not, but, and frankly, back when I was a kid, inspired by all this business, you know, it was inspiring not because we were going to beat the Russians. It was inspiring because we're moving out into space. We were all going out there. We're going to colonize them. We're going to colonize Mars. I mean, ultimately, these are ultimate human destinations that we've been talking about. And so, but that's never been policy. And we've never really done anything seriously as a nation to advance that as policy. I would hope that that would change, and now might be an opportunity for that to happen. But see, in that context, then synergy means something completely different, or maybe not completely different. But for instance, small bodies, which are the most recent target identified by the administration as a place for humans to go to in, it was 2025 or something like that? So well beyond the current administration. Always good set goals beyond your exploration date. The value of near Earth asteroids, in particular, is something that Chip mentioned, and that is resources. Because I see them as enabling the moon, and as enabling Mars, as potential resources of things like water that we could use as fuel, life support propulsion, because frankly, it's too damn expensive to cart everything up from the surface of the Earth. And that if we can identify a population of objects out there in the near Earth object populations, which we can access with low delta velocity, low round-trip times, and demonstrate that we can effectively extract and make use of this resource to open up the surface of the moon and open up pathways to Mars, then that would be of great value to all of us. Problem is, of course, with all these ideas, is that there has to be willingness to do homework. I don't think that people listen to their teachers or parents enough, policymakers listen to their teachers or parents enough growing up. And in this particular case, doing homework for the small bodies means launching a survey telescope to go and look for these low delta V, low round-trip, near Earth asteroids are in long synoptic periods with the Earth. They're very close to Earth asteroids. We think they're there, but they're not in exactly very easy places to find. And so that's why we have to put a small telescope, kind of a wise tooth, up to go hunt for them, so that we can find a target for a human mission if we wanted to do that. But really, more importantly, that we could find what the population of objects are there that might provide resources for expanding our horizons. So I think that, I think that one of the things that I am interested is thinking of the moon and Mars as long-term ultimate goals for humanity. How do small bodies enable that? And what do we need to do in order to determine whether that's possible and how to accomplish that? Of course, there's some basic questions about even the moon/Mars' ultimate destinations, and that is, you know, Grayson was talking about settlement in his speech as being the ultimate goal, which I think is right. But we don't know if that's possible, because there's another area of homework that simply hasn't been done. Can Earth life thrive on a lunar gravity? Can Earth life thrive in a Martian gravity? If it can't, and there's some research that suggests that it can't, then we got to take those goals off the table and rethink this whole thing. So I think that there's just a lot of homework that needs to be done that impacts all of our disciplines. So after that rant, I'll hand it off to David.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, well, when we talk about synergies, and I think these points have already been made by these folks, we have to distinguish between enhancing versus enabling synergies. And of course, the enabling concept is one where you have to do A before you can do B, whereas the enhancing is, we think of these in parallel tracks and try to look for interactions that benefit, that raise all the boats, you know, with the tide. So I think that's an important distinction. I think the tack I've decided to take in my comments is to just illustrate what we consider to be really enabling for Mars, where human mission to Mars, and to sort of, that's our tall tent poles, and then to work from there as to what the relationships might be. And really, the key for Mars is whatever we can learn about it, that planet can only improve the safety and the capabilities in a eventual human mission. So there's a lot of target-specific information that we need to learn from Mars to really understand how to proceed. And of course, the other advantage of an ongoing Mars program is that it's sort of the statement, to keep the dream alive, you need periodic exciting results from the red planet. And this really allows me to make another key point. And that is, if we really want the public to commit the resources to do a human mission, there's, the public desire has to be there to proceed. And so whatever all of our programs can do to just get that public enthusiasm up to the threshold level, I think, is going to be something we have to take right alongside the technical details and all the other stuff that we're going to discuss today. Our position is that the Mars Sample Return mission that we're proposing now to start, that hopefully will proceed with the first flagship in 2018, is just absolutely required before human exploration can happen for us. And first of all, Mars has this little pesky thing called a biological potential, which I think we need to address and to quantify to some degree before we could ever hope to send humans there. And sample return, I think, is inescapable as a prerequisite to address that. And then the other sort of one-liner comment, which I can't help but mention, is that if you can't demonstrate sample return, how credible is people return? You know? You know, I know some people will just volunteer and go, but I'm sorry, the public will not go along with this. And, you know, so that for us is the credibility test, you know? And that involves a lot of technology and a lot of specifics that we can get into. So for us, Mars Sample Return really, with its ability to provide a detailed characterization of the Martian surface environment, is really for us a prerequisite. Okay, so again, I'm just looking at this from the Mars perspective, and then we can, you know, we can talk about potential crosstalk between the various objects and missions. So therefore, getting down more into the weeds of the issue, obviously, long-duration flights, and that is extended exposure, interplanetary space radiation, and the biomedical issues some that were mentioned. I mean, that's clearly something that's very critical for a human mission to any remote object. The, another thing for us, of course, is this pesky atmosphere around Mars. It's what makes it interesting, but it also makes entry, descent, and landing actually very challenging. And so therefore, Mars has this atmosphere which makes an EDL at Mars unique, particularly for large payloads. And of course, Mars Science Lab is going to be our largest payload. I think it's pretty close to what Viking was, might be right around there. But, you know, with a human mission, we're talking about much greater than a metric ton. And that is a specific challenge that is Mars-specific for us. And again, of course, the comment was made about the use of institute materials as resources, and for that matter, as an assessment of hazards. And again, that's a very Mars-specific thing because of the particular nature of the interaction between the Mars climate and the surface. And, you know, the simulants we need are the ones that we will design based on observations we make at Mars. I mean, there's enough we do not know about the processing of Mars regolith that really compels us to base, you know, a lot of what we would design around on actual observations. We hope that we're going to make a big step forward with MSL. Clearly, sample return would be a big step beyond that for characterizing that. So those are some examples. Synergies that I can think of would be anything related to surface mobility that could be employed. Surface tools, I think that was mentioned in one of our email correspondences, that an astronaut, that the astronauts might use. Spacesuit technology. I think a lot of it is, you know, specific, you know, things like you would buy at the hardware store for use around the house, kind of stuff, that would really not necessarily be destination-specific. And then anything that helps us cope with the long-duration flight, the radiation, the challenges associated with spacesuit design and that kind of thing. And so for me, that's sort of a first pass-through the problem, trying to highlight the little things that concern us the most about Mars, and to make the argument for why, for us, sample return is really our next big step, the gateway we have to get through to get to the great beyond. That's it.
I'd like to make just one comment. And this is, again, about synergies. PSI and Raytheon missile systems were involved in the study for the vision architecture, one of 13 teams. And one of the things that we talked about, we built an architecture that included asteroids in terms of going back to the moon, but also to Mars. And that's the technology, the processes we learned in extracting, utilizing asteroid resources, particularly water for things like fuel, that would be directly applicable to Mars because you ain't going to take it with you. You got to get down, when you get down to the surface, you need to be generating the fuel down there that you're going to need to get back up off. In fact, we're also looking at Phobos and possibly Demos as gas stations. Again, if the stuff is there, more homework that you would want to use to create, process the fuel that you use to get humans back to Earth and even get them down to the surface of Mars.
Yeah, I think there's
A lot of waypoints. You know, so there's things that one could learn using local resources that would then be directly applicable to sending people to Mars.
It would be interesting to do a cost study. I mean, obviously, you get one benefit by getting resources from elsewhere than the Earth, because you don't have to launch it from the Earth. But there's another cost in delivering something to the surface of Mars from orbit that you then need to get back off. And that's another cost that you have to pay. So I think it'd be nice to get some analyses of that.
Yeah, it's all one way. Actually, we did some.
Yeah, so that would, so there's, that's a cost-to-benefit that has to be done.
And again, also, being on the surface of a planetary body, particularly the moon and Mars, being able to develop institute resources may allow you, or may be able to give you more mobility on the planetary surface also.
Or longevity.
Yeah, longevity, that's right.
But I would make one point, and that is, you know, we talked about public interest. I would submit that the public is not interested in sending a person to the moon, sending a person to an asteroid, or sending a person to Mars. There simply isn't a wellspring of support that, remember, we remember back 40-odd years ago.
Of course, we all do.
Yeah, well, not everybody in the room.
Well, the three of us.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that we need to think about what is the, you know, how does one get the public support for what kind of human activity? And I would assume that it's, I would And I would assume that it's, I would submit that it's something other than going back and planting another damn flag.
Well, let me make a comment and provide an example of that, Mark. With the missions that ESMD has conducted in the last couple of years, if the press can be seen as a way to represent the American public, you know-- Tough assumption, tough assumption.
Which channel?
Tough assumption. But if you look at the kinds of questions that we got when we had just these exciting results that came out of those missions, the ones that always came back to us was, what does this mean for exploring with people? So at least at some level, now, part of that may be that there was a big target on us, but I think in principle, there really is a level of interest, and we saw it with the last flight of the shuttle, that people want to connect what we're doing with, can we go there?
Can we go there, and then that's it for 50 years?
That's a different story. That's, you were getting to what Grayson was talking about, that in effect, we've been acting that way, but we've certainly never said it, and we certainly don't have a policy.
And I don't think it's fair to blame NASA, you know, because NASA is often put on the hook as, oh, NASA doesn't know what it's doing, blah, blah, blah. NASA executes policy, NASA does not create policy, NASA does not make policy. It does the best it can with a bad hand sometimes. Sometimes. Sometimes it can do it on its own, but, you know, what can I say?
One of the things that I think became abundantly clear to some of us was that the best way to get that engagement, to get that support, is to be effective, is to do good stuff where people can make the connection. They understood that even though we were able to do this spectacular science from, for example, Mark's camera, the images that were coming back, they also knew that, hey, that means we are going to be able to determine where we can go, and we can be safe about it. So there is this connection among all of the different things we do with each of our missions, and to have, to be able to leverage the benefit for the non-primary element of the mission, that interest is there, and the public will get it. And we have to work in such a way that we engender the value from both organizations. Questions from the audience? Pamela?
Mike?
What's this?
Do you need one?
I have a comment, a little comment, a comment and a proposal. I think you're saying this reinforces my notion that we really need a new paradigm here, and that scares people. Thanks. That scares people. We need a new paradigm, and that scares people that usually make decisions about resources in very high places, but the thing that unites all the comments that you made is a need for certain basic technologies that all of the wishes and dreams for every target basically have in common. And so instead of taking a continually shrinking pine and trying to divide it among the favored candidates, which is pretty much the strategy that NASA has been using for the last decades, I propose that it would be a very wise strategy, in fact, to think about expanding, really making a serious commitment, and all the science communities have got to back this, to setting aside a certain percentage of our budget to devote to technology developments, not just brand-new stuff that somebody just thought of yesterday, but stuff that's been waiting at TRL II or III that needs to go over to the other side, that can provide a kind of mass reduction, because it means you use fewer resources in electronics, in power production, and in any one of a number of supporting technologies. And unless we do that, we're always going to be back in this stuck place, competing for limited resources with programs virtually disappearing. And if we can do, if we could have the discipline to pull this off and to make, and stick to it for five or 10 years, we would come out at the end of the day with greater performance capabilities for lower cost, which means that you could actually start putting flagship missions back on the table again. So that's my comment. I have a potential solution. I actually lead a team that just got some funding from DARPA to look at developing design tools, adaptable design tools, based on truly adaptable learning systems that have been demonstrated at some low level, but we intend to fully demonstrate it. It will actually change the way we think about artificial intelligence. But what these tools can do, what any tools that can do this could do, is allow you to look at programmatic rather than mission-by-mission looks at your desires. When you can look programmatically, we can think of more than just the mission, because mission is going to be driven by cost. If you go over to advanced concept development laboratories in any of the NASA centers, the number-one thing that's the centerpiece is cost. That's because you're thinking one mission at a time. You can't make a compelling case to develop technology on the budget of one mission. It's just not cost-effective. The only way that you can do it is you can look at programmatically over a decade. Is it a good investment? Who needs it? Are there other stakeholders I don't know about who would need the same technologies? How can we combine our forces and reduce costs to this particular group of constituents over here? How can we interest investors, including in the private sector, in actually investing in these technologies? And in fact, I had a conversation with somebody yesterday who said, well, you're never going to get private investment at that level. I said, well, if NASA could provide a basic infrastructure by doing something like this, you would get investment. I think that we have to shift our paradigm a little bit and think of the bigger picture. And I can tell by everybody's comment that we really, we have a lot in common in terms of what our needs are to do whatever we want to do. Please comment. I invite people, in November, we will basically have our beta version of this tool, and I invite anybody in this room to take a chance at looking at different programmatic ways to achieve your goals, and explore them, and populate the tool with models for all kinds of things that we're going to need to know about.
I just want to make an interesting statistic in response to that, and that is that in 1960, when the commission came back to recommend whether it should be a human mission or robotic mission to the Moon to return a sample, the cost that they came up with was it would be about the same if you did it robotically or if you did it with humans. And so when Kennedy came into office, he said, well, that's a no-brainer. To get the public to come along, we're going to make this a human mission. If that number were done again today, it would be different by a factor of 50. So that tells you what technology has done to enable robotic exploration, and I think the record speaks for itself. We've got a lot of hardware out there doing a lot of things. I think the challenge is to bring that human number down somehow, again, with maybe the technology development that you're talking about, because I think that's going to be the real gatekeeper for this. I agree.
Oh, well, I would say that, and it's not just technology, you know, again, it's also infrastructure. And for bringing down the cost of human exploration, human, expanded human activity in space, you know, we could invest in things like refuables, getting, be able to get a spacecraft out there and fuel it up in space, send the fuel up whether from the Earth or from local resources recovered in air space. But unless there's a frame, a policy framework that motivates that, ain't going to happen just because it's going to make things cheaper.
Just a comment I want to make. There's always disparaging marks about planting a flag. As a human, an American, and a patriot, I'm very proud, when I look at the Moon, to think my flag is there, and I can't imagine any human or patriot anywhere that wouldn't be ever so proud to see their flag there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see it there, I'd like to see more there rather than just once in 50 years.
Exactly.
You know, but when you have terminal target scenarios, where it's just dead-end projects and where you're not building on anything, then it's kind of a, you know, it's great to have the coffee table buck, but if that's all you want, then it's going to get tattered after a while.
I'm not an American, but I'd like to see another American flag part of there.
Call Homeland Security now.
I'd like to see a British flag there as well, but, just, certainly not a Kiwi flag. Just to think about the different targets that we're talking about here and synergies and technology, there's one very big difference between Moon/Mars and then the small bodies, and that's gravity. Given the lack of gravity well at small bodies and the technologies needed to do that, are there still synergies that you see between the different groups that would be able to enable small-body exploration, or the other way around? Like Mark to start, and then we'll go back through the other guys.
Well, I was just thinking of something that was just published recently by Dan Lester and company, talking about telepresence, but you've got to get close enough. And so maybe the key, or maybe something that could be a renaissance in exploring all these bodies, is not so much getting boots on the ground, but getting in close enough proximity so you have less than a four-tenths of a second round-trip time, so that you could really be kinesthetically connected, so that instead of trying to pick up something with a bulky glove looking through a visor, you're there in a virtual type of thing where you've got all use of your fingers, and you've got more delicate stuff to play with, and you get better eyeballs down there on the surface, and it doesn't seem like you're really any different, or it's like you're there. I mean, there's people who conduct remote surgery around the Earth where they're actually cutting on other people's bodies, but they're beneath that .4 second round-trip time so that they have that kinesthetic connection. That's something where if we decided to scientifically explore, you know, or talking about scientific exploration as opposed to human expansion or something like that, that that's a technique that might be very usefully deployed at all small bodies and the Moon and Mars, and where what we learn and how to interact is something that would be directly applicable, you know, if we gain one experience from one that could be applied to another. I think Dan's suggestion for the Moon was to set up a hab at Earth Moon L1 and go have fun on the surface from there. I thought that was a really, really interesting idea.
Well, just a quick comment to that. I can't imagine ever doing human exploration without having a halo of robotic capabilities surrounding it everywhere we go. You know, just like even in the space station, you have, you're talking about robots that go outside and do things, I mean, this halo just goes with us everywhere, and the synergy between the human and the robot component is obviously going to be a key part of this.
I think, again, I'll go back to one of my first statements, and that was identifying and utilizing resources. You know, I think images are very, very important in everything we do in convincing the public, you know, where can we go, how long can we stay? And I think probably one of the, again, unique images would be having a human on another planetary surface opening up a bottle of water that was produced on that planetary surface. I think that image and that technology is very transformational in terms of moving out from the Earth, from low Earth orbit, to exploring the other parts of the solar system.
Or Coca-Cola.
Oh, Coca-Cola.
You won't even need mentors.
This is something that came up at the Explore Now workshop. You know, Laurie Leishen was up there showing pictures and showing these images that would be inspiring the younger generation, and I took a little exception of that because for people like, well, like us, who remember, who can be inspired by these kinds of images because we remember when we couldn't do that, and to see that reconnects with earlier times. And we can be inspired, but I think of my 25-year-old son, who gets far more visual stimulation from World of Warcraft Online as well as all the CGI in movies, and frankly, the image of a human on another planet drinking some water that was produced there, I don't think would be inspiring to him at all, because he's inundated with imagery that's even more fantastic, and he doesn't have that kind of historical connection that we do. And so I think that to inspire younger people, that, you know, we need to inspire them not with an image, but with an idea of what it is that we're doing.
This discussion of synergies across various potential destinations brings me to mind a series of synergies that came out in 1990.
Some synergies that were brought out in a mission architecture study that was part of some work I did at RAND in 1990 as part of the Space Exploration Initiative, where we looked at more and more complex missions on the surface for Mars and the technologies that were needed to develop them. And what came out that was really interesting is you looked at ISRU, energy production, water production, improvements in healthcare. These, all of these investments came back and contributed to a number of areas in the national interests. So if it's not just closing the loop on the synergies between these destinations, but being able to communicate these back to Congress and the policymakers and the public as to how these things all contribute to a variety of very high-value payback for the national interest.
Brad, you had a comment?
So this is a question for Chip and maybe Clive and Steve as well. I was curious to what extent during the development of the lunar exploration roadmap, the MEPEG and SPEG communities were consulted, and what are the current plans to move forward for the next iteration of the roadmap in leveraging those, these new collaborations that we're trying to foster here?
Clive, you're the roadmap group. Do you want to comment on that?
You can run.
He always had a way with words.
With regard to Mars, because when we developed the roadmap, I think the Small Body Assessment Group was only just being formulated when we started this. With regard to Mars, we had Dave Beatty as part of the initial roadmapping team from the Mars Exploration Office, and he was heavily involved with the development of the feet-forward theme. We have since then developed that, had our, last year, we started to look at synergies between the small bodies and also the Moon. I think, Chip, you presented that at the SPEG meeting in January or somewhere around there? What did you do there? You just went there? But again, and I now think the SPEG are developing your roadmap.
Yeah, our roadmap is hopefully going to be done August 15th, but, yeah, we're wrapping ours up right now, so--
Right. So this interaction is iterative and ongoing, and that's the whole point of trying to get everybody together to talk about synergies with regards to that. So with terms of roadmapping, I mean, they're all living documents. They change as situations change, as so they should, otherwise they're redundant and a waste of time. So that's where we are right now.
Did that answer your question?
Sort of a comment and question. So I'm from planetary protection, so my entree into all of this was through Mars exploration. But planetary protection also has implications for other bodies, maybe not so strict as Mars, because not all of the bodies have the biological potential. So I'm encouraged to see this discussion among the different science communities, and I'm not exactly sure, I thought this whole afternoon session was much more broadly organized to include commerce, too. And yesterday, in the lunch and focus group, in the commercial group, they were talking about the idea of incremental and sustained and cumulative, building little by little. And it seems to me that that's what we all need to work on, and so there should almost be a commercial person up there, because we're all in this together. And when they go up there to do ISRU, it's going to be built on the science that we all put together, and they can be helping to deliver science and use science. So that's the way we're going to get to the public, not just talking among the scientific community, but also engaging the public with, that's how they're going to get there. So it seems to me that it has to be the science and technology, so there's a missing person at that table, and I do know we're going to talk about it later, but planetary protection goes all over those--
Can I just make a comment on that? The League Executive Committee does have a commerce person involved on it, from Lockheed Martin, and so we do have access-- Martin, and so we do have access and interactions with regards to commerce, and also, as you saw in, in the League presentation that I had, along the edge, it does say commerce. So, we're very, very conscious of that, and again, as you had mentioned, this is something we could potentially expand in our discussions.
I, I guess I would be a little, not poo-pooing, but, but right now, space commerce is primarily communication satellites, a lot of, a lot of space laws surrounding liability issues, orbit-type stuff. There's no, there's really, there's not much of a way of profit potential in science, per se, there's always been the, the schemes to do, you know, data, data, whatever it is, providing, where the government buys, what the, what the people do, but frankly, unless you've got a return on investment that's fairly guaranteed, it ain't going to happen. The commerce-
Oh, yeah, now, they're talking about the planet exploration, deliberately, they'll take their science up here too.
Yeah, who's going to invest in the infrastructure required to do that?
Well, they can buy a master.
Well, yeah, but what they're doing is, is, you know, so you got Divergent Black, that's, that's, whose model's based on tourism. On a separate project, I've been involved with Excor on science, you know, suborbital science, where, where they provide a service that they think will be cheap enough that bring companies like mine there to purchase their, their services for that. It's, 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 it's pretty narrow focus, and it's, and it's all based on getting a, getting immediate, not long-term, getting immediate return on investment, because you simply can't carry a large amount of money for, for a long period of time. So, so I think that, you know, commerce on the moon or, or whatever, that's, that's great to put on PowerPoint charts, but it's, it's more in a fantasy area right now, and I think that we do ourselves better by looking at what are the models that people are, who are actually engaged in business, actually investing in today? How do they expect to, to make the return? What are the opportunities in that context that we might, might be able to benefit from?
Okay, and I, I've sat in some of those meetings where they talked about how NASA will want someone to bring cargo to the space station, or, and so that, and then people, and so these are the steps, and FAA is already involved in granting the suborbital licenses and soon to be the orbital licenses. So, we're not talking a three-to-five-year horizon here, but that's the direction it's going, and there will be people who are willing to put up that money and invest in a longer term, and the moon is the next step in many ways. For the, for the, just for the practical part of that, sure demonstration project.
For what?
The moon will be the demonstration of the outpost of the research, of the science, of the technology, all of it together.
Yeah, I'm afraid on, well, I don't-
We, we may not be here to see it, but it's the next ten, twenty years.
Right, next year in Jerusalem.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean to, to limit what I think is really productive conversation, but I'm looking at the, looking at the clock. You've had your hand up for a while, but a real quick question or comment?
No, I'm not sorry, I think it's all saying about, very good.
Yep.
Very good, not waste of investment, would have to come to the floor for immediate return. If that's where people will invest here, are people who don't care about if they get immediate return.
And that's what we've seen already in this whole field. I'm sure you've seen with Excor and with many of the other companies involved. And there are certain companies who do see a return for doing science things in space. I think we can all name several big contractors who do that routinely. So, there, there is money to be made from supporting scientific research in space.
Okay, now, what-
It's good to look at the specific examples and study that.
Yeah, and what I'd like to do now is with, is give each of our panel members a chance for some closing thoughts.
Great, thank you, Mike. Again, as I mentioned earlier with my opening statement, this is really just the first step, for us to meet and for us to talk about potential synergies, and at least for the lunar community to give input into this gang of three right now. Again, as I've mentioned, you know, we're trying to, going to try to keep this dialogue open and move forward on this evaluation of potential synergies among these three types of destinations.
Great. Thanks, Chip. Mark?
Yeah, and I want to say that, yeah, I think this is, this is great in that, that I really don't think that we're going to have much, or that human activity in space really requires a consideration of the synergies among the moon, Mars, and small bodies, that I don't think that going forward, that nothing of a substantial nature, apart from maybe going back to Laura Thorburn Space Station, is going to happen without us joining forces, if you will, and seeing where, where does one benefit the other, and where do we learn from each other, or gain lessons from each other.
How our larger communities can push that.
David?
Well, I just want to reemphasize again the importance of sample return. I think we are entering an era in the solar system, not just for Mars, but for all these other bodies of targeted sample return from places, and we've heard several times how resource, local resources are a key rationale, and how we need to go out and do assays of some of these, maybe robotically, to see basically where those resources lie. Furthermore, if you want to talk about engaging people, bringing samples back to the Earth engages a whole community of researchers and, and other groups, engineering groups that are here on the Earth, that would become a part of that process. And, and so therefore, I think synergies could be sought in areas of sample handling, acquisition, caching, all, you know, preservation. We heard some of these comments made earlier, and I think that's technology that raises all the boats and moves us closer to that period we're all looking forward to, so...
Great, thank you. Let's give a, a round of applause for our panel. And I want to encourage the folks in the room that when you have the opportunity to interact with the other communities that are out there that are represented at the table here, please take it, because having a lot of smart people is better than only having a few numbers of smart people.